Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This thing hooked on my glasses for some reason. All right, activity reports. It's been relatively quiet. We did have a public safety meeting. I think it was Tuesday after the last council meeting. If I recall, nothing earth shattering that came out of there. And we did have the, the friends of the airport did have a fly-in protest at the airport on Saturday and Sunday. Friends of the airport there were selling burgers and hot dogs. And they did have some planes that came in over the two days, some pilots that came in, I guess. As far as the meeting tonight, we have a hearing at 6:30 PM in regards to the police department body worn cameras. And at 6:45, we have guests coming in to make an offer on real property that the city owns out in Heatherwood Platte III. And we have promised them a 6:45 time. That is my report, Councilmember LeBeau.
I had a budget and finance meeting and a park and tree board meeting. I think that's it.
So the budget and finance process is starting.
Oh, yes, always fun.
All right, Councilmember Hertzberg.
Also, the budget and finance, things aren't looking real pretty. And then we just got done with Public Works.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ranky.
I did not have any meetings. I did attend the drive-in over the, or fly-in, excuse me, over the weekend, but other than that, no meetings.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gilmore.
I have nothing to report.
All right, we do have a couple of department head reports. We'll start with Mr. Mergen.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Just to add on to the fly-in, they did serve approximately four to 500 burgers out there, a couple hundred hot dogs. And I think they gave over 50 airplane rides, which I know they were going last night somewhat into the evening yet. So they did a very good job. And also August 7th of 2021, if everybody wants to put on their calendar, tentatively, that is the fly-in for next year. And out at the, in the park system, the fishing pier, gazebo park are seeing an extensive amount of usage this year. It's very good to see. As noted also, the park committee did meet out there at the Ampe Park. Everybody thinks well aware, that's where we have the soccer field. Some of the items, the committee has been doing this with every single park, just walking it, touring it, and then updating our comp plan as we go. The items that we have out there mainly is getting restrooms and some type of shelter out there. A trail system, playground equipment, get some more trees out there for residents, and then possibly an underground sprinkler system for watering that soccer field. And then I guess out at the compost site and at the RV dump, we have also seen steady usage out there. Donations have been very good, so we do appreciate that.
Any questions for Ron? I hear several comments about the compost site being open for use without the limited hours for some of the people out in the township that are only here on weekends or something, you know, and for the RV dump site. And lots of comments about the extending the little frontage road there, too. Game, Ms. Ludwig.
I have that elections are tomorrow at the area center from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The filings for mayor, council, and hospital. And tomorrow at 5:00, as of close of day today, we had one file for the city position on the hospital board, two for mayor, and three for the two council positions. Motor vehicle, nothing new to report. There doesn't appear to be any slowing down. Driver's license fee has tripled in both June and July. LGA came in certified at 771-290 for 2021. That's only $834 less than the original thought. So that's great considering the COVID and the riots. We will be setting the preliminary budget figures at the next council meeting. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Belinda? If not, we have the consent agenda before us. The minutes from those seven meetings on page one, vouchers on page two totaling $429,142.71. That's the consent agenda.
Make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, second by Gilmore. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, none, that carried. All right, new business. We only have one item, item A, Airport. Ron?
All right, thank you. First of all, we have two leases. First of all, hangar 10 will be Johnson. And the second one, a long-term pilot that we have out there is going to be retiring from flying, although he is keeping up his license, but that lease will go over to Kramer.
You should put the microphone right in front of you, so.
I will, yeah, get that. Okay, and then the other item we have that went through the Airport Commission several weeks back is the QT reader out there. If you look on page 24, we do have the information from QT pod or their systems, which indicates that the system we have, which is the 3000, we will no longer have support for. So obviously, we do need to upgrade it at some point here. We did go through and find out what the CARES funding that we're having from the airport, it looks like we will be able to utilize that and get it paid for through that. The two that we do have, the first one is from Westmore in the amount of $14,631, and then from QT Petroleum in the amount of the $14,292. But they will honor their discount that they do have listed on there in the amount of the $19,95. We did also contact Fuel Master. They were the original people that were out there. After several calls, they did, they decided not to give us a quote on it. So again, this did go through the Airport Commission, and they did recommend going with the QT Petroleum.
I'll make the motion to approve the attached T-hanger leases between the City of Painesville and Alan Johnson and the City of Painesville and Jeff Kramer.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by LeBeau and seconded by Hertzberg to approve. Let me get to the right page again here. I was down in the quotes. The attached T-hanger leases between the City of Painesville and Alan Johnson and the City of Painesville and Jeff Kramer. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, none, that carried.
I'll make the motion to approve the quote from QT Petroleum in the amount of $14,295 with the $1,995 discount.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve the quote from QT Petroleum in the amount of $14,295 with the $1,995 discount. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, none, that carried. All right, then old business. We have ordinances to deal with. The first one is on page 29, and that is ordinance number 14, third series. This has been published. And this was something that was omitted from when the codification was readun. We're putting it back on the books. Maybe?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 14, third series, and the official summary of ordinance number 14, third series, and ordinance regulating tobacco sales within the City of Painesville, Minnesota.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Gilmore to approve ordinance number 14, third series, and the official summary of ordinance number 14, third series, and ordinance regulating tobacco sales within the City of Painesville, Minnesota. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, none, that carried.
Mayor, just so you're aware, we did lose Sean right after the, right before the consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
He hasn't come back on yet.
He's here.
He's here.
He's here, oh.
I'm done fighting with media, Doc, for the day.
Oh. That occasionally is a losing battle, anyway.
It's proving to be so today.
All right, well, welcome. Okay, we have made it through new business A and old business A, and we're on to old business B, ordinance number 16, third series, on the tobacco chapter. And this is, intent here is to bring this into, to comply with the legislative changes. And also has been posted for 10 days.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 16, third series.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, none, that carried.
Mayor, could I, could I ask, just that we have an approval of the summary of ordinance 14, third series. I guess it's kind of contained within the, within the approval of the ordinance, but I think we should have just a record that the council reviewed and approved the summary.
Okay, item A, then the motion to approve the summary of ordinance number 14, third series.
I'll make the motion to approve the summary of ordinance number 16, third series.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Ranky to approve the summary of ordinance number 14, third series. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, none, that carried.
Wasn't that number, ordinance number 16, third series?
There's not a summary of that one. It's the long one that.
Oh, yeah, I thought we did approve that one already. We did.
They did. In their first motion, they made a motion to approve ordinance number 14, third series, and the official summary.
Oh, I apologize. I didn't understand that, okay.
Okay. Well, okay, double dipping. What do you mean, sure. Okay, 2018 Stream Improvement Project, page 45, check.
Yeah, just to give a quick update, the 2019 project is substantially complete. Really, the last really remaining item is the seeding. It has come around quite well over the summer, but we do plan on working with the contractor and have some reseeding, have some of the weed sprayed in areas, and have some reseeding done this fall here, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. And at the last meeting, the alley improvements are still slated to be completed in the September, October timeframe as well. So in your packet is a copy of pay request number 11 for the 2019 project for work completed in July, and it amounts to $9,430.17.
I'll make a motion to approve payment estimate number 11 payable to Voss Plumbing Heating and Painesville, incorporated in the amount of $9,430.17.
Second. Motion is by Gilmore, second is by Ranky to approve payment estimate number 11 payable to Voss Plumbing Heating and Painesville, Inc. in the amount of $9,430.17. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, none, that carried. All right, and the T-hanger.
Yes, the airport T-hanger is substantially complete as well. Just a couple reminder punch list items remain on that one before we'll be able to close that project out. So in your packet is a copy of pay request number six for that project in the amount of $5,333.30.
I'll make a motion to approve payment estimate number six payable to Voss Plumbing Heating and Painesville in the amount of $5,333.30.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve payment estimate number six payable to Voss Plumbing Heating and Painesville in the amount of $5,333.30. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, none, that carried. And the Seal Code project.
Yeah, the 2020 Seal Code project was completed during the month of July. Obviously, the Seal Code and Fog Seal were placed, and some of the striping was completed. Since then, most of the remaining striping has been completed since this pay request. So in your packet is a copy of pay request number one for the project in the amount of $80,455.1.
I'll make a motion to approve payment estimate number one payable to Astec Corp. in the amount of $80,455.01.
Second. Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Ranky to approve payment estimate number one payable to Astec Corp. in the amount of $80,455.1. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, none, and that carried. And anything else on that? All right, then we'll move on to COVID-19. Belinda.
We have received emails from the county. They're sending them out to all the cities within the county that they are going to do a small business relief program with their COVID monies, the FEMA money. They are reaching out to the communities to see if the cities want to manage it themselves or if we want the county to manage for our businesses. I've tried to ask every question I could think of that may come up tonight. What they're looking at is if they do it, if they run the program, they would like the city to commit to part of our COVID money we would send to them to give to the businesses. If we do that, they would want that money upfront. If our businesses don't apply for a small business grant through them, they don't know if we would get that money back or not. That's undecided. If we decide to manage it, whatever, we would have to earmark X amount of dollars of our FEMA money to be for our small businesses. And then they would, if we earmarked, you know, $10,000, they would give us 25% toward that. However, they would not give us any money until we went through all of our earmarked money. Let's see. Any funds that remain at the end, of course, have to go back to them November 15th. So they just want to know if they want us to administer, if we want to administer, or if we want them to do it for us. I did ask them if we had them do it and chose not to give them any of our money. How did that look? And they said potentially, there would not be enough, as much money than for our businesses. The businesses do have to meet the criteria that we have to meet, so they would have to have added expenses due to COVID that were not budgeted for between March 1st and November 15th. And they're saying they're giving a window, it looks like of about, I think about a three-week period that they're allowing businesses to apply for money. And they've got an application form. They have till September 4th. They have to be, have 50 or less employees, full-time equivalent employees. Has to be in operation longer than six months prior to the March 1st date. Property taxes have to be up to date, several things. Ineligible would be any kind of chains, corporate chains. Businesses that sell pawn merchandise guns, tobacco vaping products, businesses that primarily generate revenues from gambling activities or adult-oriented activities, businesses that derive income from passive investments, business-to-business transactions, real estate transactions, property rentals or property management, billboards or lobbying. And then they have a simple application process. So the main thing the council has to decide is if they would like to have the county manage it and/or give any of our money to the county to do so, or if we want to do it and take the possibility of getting some of their money.
What's the maximum you can ask for?
That we.
Your business.
They are doing up to, I believe, I think 500 to 7,500. Yep, 500 to 7,500 based on the costs submitted and the funds available.
$500.
Yep.
Okay. I was just wondering.
Yep, that's what they're doing. I mean, I think we can set our own criteria, but I think they would like to follow, us to follow their guidelines as much as possible. They do want to, because they, if they put any money to it, they have to make sure that money is being used appropriately for COVID.
And if we run it ourselves and turn somebody down, it's on us.
I suppose.
And if they turn somebody down, it's on them.
I would suppose it would be.
You just think it's a small community?
And I don't know if the small businesses would be more comfortable coming to us because they know us, or would they be more comfortable going to the county because they don't know that.
There's, there's no way of knowing that. We talked a little bit about this, and I guess the two questions that I have, well, actually, three now. But you mentioned tobacco products, that if they, if they're involved in selling tobacco products, they are not.
Primarily.
Primarily, okay.
It says ineligible businesses, businesses that primarily sell pawn merchandise guns, tobacco, or vaping products.
Okay, so then my second question is, you mentioned that, you know, if there's anything left over, we have to go back to the county, and that's only their share. If we administer the program, it's only their share, correct?
Well, it's kind of, they're doing it the opposite way depending on who runs it. If we decide to manage it and we earmark X amount of dollars, they won't give their 25% to us until we go through our whole amount. Whereas if we have them manage it, they want our money upfront. I assume they'll use that first.
Good. The other question I have is if, if we administer it, do you feel we have the staff to handle that?
Great question.
Well, I don't think you'd want, I mean, I think you'd have the EDA administer it probably. I think that's what most cities are doing. I think they're having their economic development authority do it, just like they do for any loans. They just make this a separate fund through the EDA. I don't think you'd want to create a bunch of work for staff. I mean, I know there's some staff time that gets spent when there's an application for an EDA loan, but.
Staff is the EDA, yeah. Pardon me? Staff is the EDA, or.
Well, but they have a loan committee that decides.
Oh, the, oh, the committee.
They gotta put, they gotta put a package together for them. But I mean, it's not like staff's deciding who gets the loan or not, right?
We would not make the decision. I would say EDA would make that decision most likely. We would get all the paperwork.
There's still all the paperwork and.
Do all the labor.
To me, I think the big question is, how much money would you have to put into a loan fund if you were going to do your own deal? I mean, a lot of cities are deciding they can't, they're not spending enough of the money, and they don't want to give it back to the county. So they're going to do a loan program for businesses in their city because they got a fair amount of money that they can do it with. If you only have a little bit, it's probably just better to just give some to the county, it seems to me. But, but if you, if you, if you've got those COVID funds, and there's going to be a substantial amount left that you're going to have to give back to the county at the end because you're not going to be able to use it, then making loans to the small businesses makes sense.
And we have 188,300.
189,330.
189,330.
Yep.
That's the expenses that we have been.
And you have a fair amount of leeway in deciding what the criteria are for those loans. The obvious ones were businesses that had to shut down. I mean, you know, those, and I think some cities are putting the emphasis on that, for businesses that had to close.
I got a, I got a question on that one. Yep, something you said about gambling. What does that do for bars that have pool tabs and bingo?
Let's see. It says businesses that primarily generate revenue from gambling activities and businesses that generate any part of income from adult-oriented activities. So it'd have to be one of their primary revenues.
So it'd be like a bingo.
Bingo hall or a casino.
Right, okay.
So they would still call it, but.
Yep.
So it is a very busy time of the year, Jeff, so manpower would be tough, I'm sure.
Is there any idea how much of that amount we've been allotted that we are going to use?
Or not at this point?
Okay, so we don't really know how much of that's left over if we wanted to do.
I mean, we haven't spent anywhere near that for our supplies and such that we've used. I have been attending a lot of webinars. People are getting quite creative with it, but you have to be super careful because you don't want to have to pay that back in an audit if they say that it's not eligible. Everybody has said absolutely stay away from giving like a, just a handout to everybody in town the same. I have pleaded my case on that several times, and that has not, people, they say that's a red flag. You can't do that. So if you were to give every resident X amount of dollars to try to help them.
I'm kind of in favor of letting the county do it, but I think we need to promote it or at least let our businesses know that this is out there. Well, we gotta come up with a number, right? So if we say $30,000, that'd be potentially 60 businesses in town could get $500.
Or they can, I mean, I think it says they can get up to 7,500.
How much?
7,500.
That's the, you know, the range that's been is about 500, the county is $500 to 7,500.
Oh.
And I think when we set that figure, we do want to remember, I did ask them, I said, what if our local businesses do not apply and we don't use, and you do not use our money? Do we get it back or do you use it for other cities or uses? And they said they're trying to determine, and they're simply not sure at this time. So potentially, we could give them, say, $30,000, and our businesses don't apply for whatever reason, and they may not give it back to us, another community may get it.
But we can, instead of making the committee or the county decide how much each business gets, we can do a flat rate. We do a flat rate that we're giving all of our businesses that follow the guidelines and so forth, $1,000, flat rate, and don't do the 500 to 7,500, correct? Because it's our money.
I would think.
You could set your own loan criteria.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
You can do a flat rate for the application. Your application would be for X number of dollars, no matter what the, the business was. It's that you just can't say we're going to give every, every business $500.
Yes, you have to be very, very cautious.
If you fill that out and do that, this is a $1,000.
Up to 1,000 or something.
I'd say do a flat rate, because who's gonna, unless you're going to send it to the county, who's going to decide that Billy gets 500 and Sally gets 1,500?
But they have to prove that they've had that much added expense due to COVID that they did not budget for. So if they come in and apply and say they only 500, then you would have to deny them on that criteria because they haven't had enough.
This isn't for lost revenue, then?
No. Cannot be used for.
So it's like for buying your Plexiglas and all the.
Supplies.
I think, I think it can be a little bit broader than that, though. I, I think it can be, at least some of the loans, some of the cities that I've looked at their applications, I mean, they're clearly compensating people who had to shut down for lost business. I mean, for businesses that were totally shut down and, I mean, their, their loan applications, it appears to me that's what they're doing. Maybe they're, maybe they're doing it wrong, but that seems like that's what's happening.
You cannot gain any money for lost revenue.
I, I know that the cities can't, but I'm not so sure that that's, I mean, I'd have to go back and review those.
Dorance County said they have to meet the same criteria we do.
And at this point in time, it's, it's almost kind of problematic to go back to March whatever and to account for every penny. I think there probably has to be some kind of leeway there. You know, and I'm kind of mixed about the, turning it over to the city or to the county, you know, if we were able to handle it, you know, ourselves and control the, the funds, or like not have to end up losing it because we designated X number of dollars and then they don't apply for it.
What I think we're going to run into problems is, if you look at my, let's say, Amazon account, I'm going to bring you in 18 or 20 different receipts to prove what I bought. Now, if you have 30 companies doing that, you're going to have three, 400 receipts to cross-check. It's going to be a lot of paperwork, I think.
I think it is as well.
When you look, when you look at the eligible costs, I mean, I guess it's not, even on the county's deal, though, they're talking about rent or mortgage payments, you know, so those, those qualify. I mean, it's not exactly income loss replacement, but there's categories of expenses that are eligible for businesses. So I think you have to have them fill out a little form that says we had to pay these expenses, but.
Probably utilities.
Yep, utilities are on there.
Who has the liability, then, if, say, we put together a program and somebody brought in a bunch of receipts and said they spent this much, but maybe they fudged it a little bit? Is the liability to repay that amount on the city or on the individual?
I don't know the answer to that, honestly. I don't know. I would think it would be on the person that lied, but not positive. I don't know how much verification it could be required to do on these.
If we were to have a program of our own, are we required to adopt the same requirements as the county has adopted, or can we develop a program that might be a little bit more broad?
I think we have some leeway, but they do want to. I think we have some leeway, but they do want to see what we do to make sure that their money is being used properly as per COVID requirements.
Okay. What are your thoughts? It is 6:30, and we recessed the council meeting and called to order a public hearing that has been called in reference to the police department body worn cameras. And we have the chief here, we have one written response. Chief, what have you found out?
Well, I received one email, and I see 37 people commented on Life in Panesville.
Oh, why don't you put the biker Ford right in front of you there? Okay.
We had the one email, and then the 37 comments on Life in Panesville. For the most part, every comment that I've seen has been positive, and in support of it.
I did have one question, is, you know, is Jerry going to get a body cam, too?
We've had discussions about what the possibility of that would look like. I would say at this point, probably not.
Anybody else heard anything, so let's come in? As, the one written one here was, I'll, I'll read it for the, the record. I think body cam, this is from Cali Squires. I think body cameras would be a good idea for the Panesville Police Department. It would protect both the cop and the person being arrested. If a false statement was made, on one being arrested, the police would have evidence to protect him or her. With more people being anti-cop right now, I can see more false statements about cops coming. It would also protect the person under arrest, so if they are mistreated, in parentheses, like George Floyd, they or their family can defend the individual. There isn't really a public audience in Panesville when someone gets arrested in Panesville, because it is so small in population. That being said, cameras would be very beneficial for both parties. You have, like, you obviously have a copy of that, too. Anybody else for the hearing? Now, all the comments will be put together, correct? Well, we only have the one.
We only have the one comment?
We only have the one, okay. The comments from the council.
Have you gotten, have you put together, like, price quote on what that's going to cost?
The price?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's about $31,000.
Is that a one-time, or is there, like, ongoing?
There will be ongoing expenses with it as well. It's going to be probably a couple thousand dollars a year, just in licensing fees and whatnot. One thing I did mention to Belinda today, as we look at the funds that did come in or the CARES Act, there's a possibility of being able to use some of those funds for that purpose. Part of what we need is going to be some type of wireless download system, where we have the squads we do. Creates a lot of interaction, you know, contact points within those vehicles, so the wireless download will pretty much remove that. So the potential to be able to use some of that CARES money to get the servers and some of those other things that we would need, and then the individual body cams per officer. I believe that would be an appropriate use of that, those funds, so. I'm thinking you can probably cover about half of that expense with that money.
I think at the last meeting, Paul, you said one of the ongoing expenses was the redaction software. Do we need that?
We do.
Why?
Because state law requires it. We have to be able to redact faces, other private data, and stuff that the state has deemed as private. And I don't know how much the licenses for that. The licensing I'm talking about on the ongoing is for the camera system and the evidence library itself. The, the big expense with the redaction software is, it's about an $8,000 product. And it's a product that you plug in what you're looking for in any particular given, you know, video, so faces, voices, all of those types of things. You plug that in, and the system, the software itself goes through, identifies it, and then you can go through and blur out stuff, and.
So with the CARES, you don't want to wait for state funding?
So, I have had conversations with both of our representatives from this area, so Representative Demuth and Senator Howe. I have not heard anything out of their offices yet that indicates that that's probably going to get done. The police reform package that they passed back in July did not contain anything on body cameras, did not even actually sound like it was part of the discussion. So we could wait, but we may be waiting for a while. I'm not hearing.
Well, if you wait and don't use the CARES, then that's gone.
Correct.
And we have till November.
November 15th.
So maybe we should get going. Do we have a policy of when they're going to be used, or?
That's in the works.
That's the next, next step here.
Okay.
It's on the list of things to do.
Yep. I was just going to read the statements in here. It said, once, you know, the policy is drafted, then it's reviewed by Policy and Procedures, is posted on the website, social media to allow additional public comments, provide input, and back to the Policy and Procedures Board, and then would eventually come to the council. So it's not like an overnight process, but would have to move fairly quickly.
If we're going to use the money, you know?
My hope and goal would be to have it done long before the end of this year. As soon as I can get some time to sit down and work, work on it, we'll get it done and get it before Policies and Procedures.
Anything else from, for the hearing? I know you two are not here for this hearing. You're here, we're, we're getting to you two.
We're waiting.
Yep, all right. Okay, if there's nothing else, we will close the hearing and get back into the council member, or council meeting, and we are still talking about the CARES money, and how much of that to possibly designate to, for this, you know, the, the business grant fund.
So how much did we get? So mostly, you can put out this 47,000, 330,250.
I think that's the most the county would kick in.
They will kick in 25%.
Open your city's business to a maximum 25%. Your cities to a maximum. Only grant small business repayments.
We can put in whatever we want, but we have, you know, already spent some, and we are looking at spending.
That's the county.
Spending additional. And whatever we designate, the county would kick in 25% of that.
After we spend dollars.
I read that wrong.
So Belinda, you and I talked a couple of weeks ago about maybe working with the chamber to do sort of like a resident grant if people applied, and that's a no-go, or?
That, everybody that I've talked to, Sean, is totally saying stay away from that. I, I love the idea. I pushed it every webinar I've been on, and they just, they say you absolutely cannot give a, just this carte blanche amount to every household, or even if they sign a statement saying, yeah, we've had $50 worth of expenses, so, okay, here's your $50 chamber bucks. They just, they said that would be the biggest red flag for auditing it.
Let them audit it.
But we still could go up to, we don't have to follow this, is, because if you start giving, going up to $7,500 per business, you're going to knock out a lot of the businesses in town. So that $7,500 is going to be, one, I think, too high, to service as many people as we can, because with 189,000, we probably spent some, let's say we say, just a number, 50,000. If we do that, I think we should go like, maybe 1,500 and service as many small businesses we possibly can, because they can come up to $1,000, like, if you read, for your rent and your so forth. So everybody would, all the businesses could receive $1,500 if they followed that suit. Or you're going to have 10 businesses get 7,500, and the other 20 not get it, because they came in five minutes later.
I think the needs of Panesville are different than the county as a whole, and it might save us some man-hours, just give the money to the county, but we can probably do better for the people of Panesville if we manage it ourselves. I think I'd be in favor of us holding on to it and doing it locally.
No, something to keep in mind, too, if they, if they manage it, they will commit up to 25% of our total CARES Act amount that we received to our businesses.
Not what we contribute.
Not just what we contribute, no.
I mean, I, I feel like it's possible that our local businesses would be able to get more money doing this program through the county, then. Because if we, say, we gave 30,000 to the county, but the county has additional funds beyond that, so they're not going to be limited to just the 30,000 we contribute, you know?
But we get that money back, we spend all the money we allocate, too, right?
Say that again?
If we save 50,000, and we, and we do it ourselves, and we spend that 50,000, we still get the 25%.
No, they, the county will not chip in until we've gone through all our money. So if we earmark 50,000 for the businesses, and we spend 50,000 on the businesses, they won't give us anything. If, 25%, that'd be what, 12,500? If we spent up to 62,500, then we'll get their 25% of the 50,000. But we have to go through all of our earmarked money before they give us the 25%.
Okay, yeah. So earmark, we have to earmark the 25%.
Whereas, the way I understand it, if they do it, they will commit up to 25% of our total CARES Act money, so 40,000, something to that effect.
Do we know what the county's putting in?
Sterns County will commit up to 25% of our total CARES money.
No, no, how much? Their money are they putting in?
By least, the local business to a maximum.
Do we know what their loan fund is? How much money is the county putting into it?
Total.
For Panesville residents?
Just for this whole program, for the county?
I do not know grand total of what they're putting in, but they did tell me that they would commit up to 25% of what our total, grand total is. And then we chip in, that would go on top of that, I believe.
Because I think the county total would depend upon what all the other cities are committing also, or what their funds are.
I guess I'm not seeing in here, Belinda, and maybe you could point me to it, where the county would contribute 25% of our total if we can, if we sent our money to them?
The question I asked to one of the gentlemen there, I said, let's see, of the money the county has set aside, how much is for Panesville businesses? And he responded, Sterns County will commit up to 25% of your total CARES Act amount you receive.
For instance, if you keep your entire allocation, which the county will limit
But there's no way that we're going to use all that, because we've already used some of that, and have that earmarked for other things.
Right, that's why I just put in $50,000 if we earmarked that. If, and we did get the up to, which scares me, up to 25%, is it 10%, is it 5%? What's left over? I don't know. So let's just say we don't get any. That would give 33 businesses $1,500.
No, the county's planning to send an additional 25%. It says on the top of page 61.
Limit the penalty to help your city's businesses to a maximum of 25%.
Where are you reading that?
Uh, so, as I understand it, if the city administers the program and puts in 100,000, then the county will give us an extra 25. And I don't read that one as an up to. I read that one as a fixed 25%.
Correct, right.
If we send 100,000.
If we spend it first, yes. If we send, and say, the county does our program, and we do not send them any money, then they will use up to 25% of our 189 to help Panesville residents. But I don't think there's anything in here that says, if we send them 10,000, that they'll send, that they'll spend 10,000 plus 25%. I just read it as, if we use all of the money for administrative things on our end, then they will take 25% of what we received from their own money towards Panesville businesses.
I don't know if that's sure, it may be up to, Sean, because I did ask them, let's see if I can find where I asked them. If we, if the city decides not to send any money, it sounded like then that would limit maybe what they gave our businesses. That if we're going to have them manage it, we are wise to give them some of our money to do.
The word in there, Sean, where it says the county plans to send, plans, is that going to, or is that like?
Everything in this is a loophole? Okay. Misses Donovan? Um, let's, uh, let's take a break here. We have promised to hear from the mayors at 6:45. It's a little bit past that now. But they are here to address the council, and my understanding is to present an offer on the parcel the city owns out in Heatherwood Plat 3.
That's correct.
That's correct, all right.
Mayor, continue. Time and commitment to hear this. I don't know what you have before us, before you, I mean.
We, we don't have, we don't have, really anything from you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before we start, are we in a closed session?
No, they can present an offer, or?
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
What we want.
Okay.
If we discuss it, we go into closed session.
Okay. Okay. Then our offer, and we're talking about Lot 5, the, one of the third plot of Heatherwood, and our offer would be 22,000 at this point.
That's the one that's in blue on the sheet that we do out here. Okay, um, does the, what are the wishes of the council? If we want to discuss that, we can go into a closed session, and I would suspect it would be rather brief. We could do it right now.
I would like to discuss it.
I, I think we should discuss it, okay?
So, so then we will just recess the council meeting and go into closed session, and I suspect this will.
If you've got 10 minutes, Donovan and Nan, you could probably wait out in the hallway.
We need to take a roll call. All right, we are going back into open session, and we have been in closed session to discuss an offer on real property located at 420 Kewer Lane, Lot 5, Block 1, Heatherwood Plat 3.
Are we ready for a motion? Okay, I would make a motion then to counter that offer for 22,5.
Second. Motion by LaBose, second by Hertzberg, to counter at 22,5. Any discussion?
The reasoning being, a month ago, this is what we sold the last lot for.
One, yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor? I?
I.
Oppose? None? Ned Carey?
Will accept your offer.
You will. All right, then we will direct, you can confer with our city. Alright, then we will direct, you can confer with our city attorney, we'll work on the closing date and all the other information there, so, yep. Yep. We'll continue to talk on the other challenging issue here, but thank you, and welcome back down, down the hill. Okay, we're back to the, the issue of the CARES money and the offer from the county to handle the CARES business, small business grant program.
A question, first we have to figure out who's going to do it, and then we have to figure out how much money we're gonna put in it.
Yes.
Were the two main questions?
Yep, two main questions.
If you look on sixty-two, it kinda tells you all the criteria. Max is seventy-five hundred per business.
And I don't think, we don't have a problem with that.
I just think if we're going to do it ourselves, for the sake of our small businesses here in town, I would, I would like to follow the same parameters that the county is putting in place with that window of five hundred to seventy-five hundred, so that, you know, they have the opportunity to receive a grant for the greatest amount of their needs and their expenses.
So you wanna go up to seventy-five hundred?
Or I wanna contribute some money to the county and let the county do this, so that our business owners have the opportunity to, to have access to as much money as they may need, or be available to them.
We're still gonna only give ten percent of the businesses' money then, you're gonna run out. Well, not every business qualifies, do they? I would say, oh, well, you look at the, I mean, a lot of businesses weren't shut down.
Five for seventy-five hundred.
Period. You can give them a seventy-five hundred dollars, and how far, how long does it stay?
Six months.
From March to when?
March to November.
Till the date of the application submission.
From March to the date of the application?
Yep.
March, April, May, June, July, August, six months, rent at five hundred dollars a month, that's three grand right off the top. Utilities, five hundred a month, that's six thousand a month, not even started thinking yet. So seventy-five hundred bucks is gonna be easy, anybody's gonna be able to pop that in a heartbeat.
I'm leaning to us handling it ourselves and establishing the own, our own, um,
I just.
Guidelines, not guidelines, but our, our maxes, and I think fifteen hundred is, is low, but.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I wouldn't, I would not wanna cap it at like a thousand or fifteen hundred.
They need to look at this.
We're basically denying them an opportunity to apply to the county where they could have the option of up to seventy-five hundred.
Hundred eighty, thirty, one hundred and fifty, we're probably, I don't know, just doing some figuring in my head here, but are, are, are we gonna be at the QT program, or the QT that was, would qualify for CARES funds?
The airport is totally separate from this here.
Oh, totally separate from, from this, okay.
That's a little bit different, it's, yes.
Well, that's good.
One thing I did not mention, and Jen, I'm not, I didn't quite hear what you said, but.
I just wanted to know, cause I thought you and I talked about it, and I didn't wanna interrupt, but that if they've already applied for some funds through another avenue for CARES funds, they would not be eligible.
They can't double dip.
So if some of our businesses has already applied through, through some other avenue for CARES funding, they cannot give.
Or any type of grant monies.
Or any type of grant monies.
Is that where our, our COVID money that we've already loaned out jeopardize those from getting this?
I don't know that one, cause that's a loan.
What's the CARES money then?
So, the, like those small cities, or the small business grants, like the payroll grants and things that they had, would those?
Is a PPP fund, that's gonna be classified as CARES?
Any money that they applied for prior to now for COVID grant monies that were available, if they got money there, they can't, and whatever expenses were for that, they can't use for this.
So the, the payroll protection plan?
Well, that's gonna take out a few.
That's gonna knock out a whole bunch of them.
And then what about the, the E-DAP grants, wasn't there a couple of those?
Well, those aren't grants, those are loans, so I don't think that would affect it.
That's not CARES money, actually.
Oh, that's our money.
That's our money, and it's loans, so.
And that was just two, correct?
We have two.
And that program is over?
It's not over, but nobody's shown any other interest in it.
So on that application, if we do this ourselves, we have to research and find out if they had any other CARES programs first, correct?
Yeah, so, I mean, maybe, let me see what their application looks like, maybe.
We're gonna start doing.
Their application is basically on page sixty-two and sixty-three, the way it looks. Oh, okay, oh.
No, they have a full app here.
Oh.
They just put this out on their website.
Don't have it.
It just came out on their website.
Okay.
Um, yeah, one of the very first things here, it says, I acknowledge I've read the program information and application requirements, I acknowledge I have not received other assistance for expenses submitted within this application.
Oh, other expenses within this application.
But if you submit, if, if you've already gotten some money somewhere, like, let's just say a thousand dollars for mass, and then you put that same thousand dollars for mass on this one, you can't get reimbursement.
Oh, that way?
Yep.
Okay, well.
Well, you can't double, you can't double dip.
Can't double dip.
Yep. So if, if you, if your payroll, you know, that PPP was in March, and that's already been taken care of, and these are expenses afterwards, you could still apply through here?
Yes.
Okay.
Which you'd never be able to track, anyway.
No.
Good luck. You'd have to have a lot of a calumpting firms play that.
And then it asks for the basic business information, wants to know the jurisdiction, location, contact information. Please describe the business interruption experienced by your business as a result of the coronavirus public health emergency, such as full or partial closure experience and alternate forms of business operations, include effective dates of enclosures or alternate business practices. They want to know your business annual revenue for the most recent calendar year, attached twenty-nineteen tax statements, financial statements. Provide documentation supporting estimated loss of revenue if able. Profit and loss statement, what was your business, was your business fully closed, partially closed, or was it open with alternative practices? Eligible expense spreadsheet that they have to upload.
Well, here's a thought, I'm not sure if it's a good one or not, but what if we just forego the county program altogether and just set up our own? Is that possible?
Yeah, it's certainly possible, I mean, if we, but we have to, we have to know how, you know, what dollar amount of our funds we're not gonna be using, that, and that we're comfortable committing to a grant program like this, but, I, I mean, I think, you know, other counties and cities are doing it, and, you know, and, and, so it's, it's certainly doable, but you're right, you got staff time, you know.
Bill, what would have to be made public? Would all that documentation she said have to be made public in order to get this?
Doesn't have to be made public, I, I, I think, you have to, you have to collect at least some of that information, but the financial, the financials from the business don't become public.
They would go to your E-DAP finance board for those, because there's no minutes or agendas on that.
Right, that's what I was saying, cause I wouldn't do it if you have.
It would be similar to an E-DAP loan application.
Right.
That only has a certain number of people, and then a person will have to even have redact information on them.
But you could, I mean, that, that form is asking probably, I mean, I, I'm pretty, I, I just read the one from Candy Eye County, it's not nearly that much information, they're not asking for all of that, I mean, some of it, but not as much, I, I think, I can find examples from other entities that are doing this that are not going quite that far, and if you wanted me to put together some examples and share them with the members of the council, or just send them to Belinda, and she could share them out to you or whatever, I mean, you know, I think, I think there's, Stearns County is, you know, they're, they're doing a good job, I'm not saying it's bad, but they're, they're probably requesting more information, and it's gonna, I think you're gonna discourage some people from applying if you require all of that.
Right.
I think you're, you're gonna scare some people off, but.
I suppose potentially, we could tell the county to manage it, and we're not giving any money and let them do their thing, and we can do our own thing as well, and then potentially businesses could be helpful.
What was the?
Are we allowed to do that?
What was the deal on the prior money?
Can't use the same money, same things with two different monies.
Yeah, you can't double dip. So you use your rental agreements and so forth from a different funding act from, then you can't use the same month's rental for this? Well, say somebody got thirty thousand in April, so they're not eligible for this then, or they?
They're eligible, but it would have to be for expenses after, after that.
When that, when that ran out, it'd still be a month or two probably, that, okay. Well, that would open it up for quite a few.
Yep.
But now a lot of the businesses are reopened, but they aren't at, they're like at fifty percent capability.
Even if we manage it, my understanding is, they still have to meet the requirements to receive COVID money.
Are they?
It's still COVID money.
Is the staff time spent managing that eligible for reimbursement through this?
I would presume it could be argued that it would be. There's, there's a lot of gray area on staff time, it depends on who you talk to, I think everybody's in agreeance that like overtime, like the motor vehicle girls are getting overtime right now because of the long lines, because not everybody's open, that's very, pretty black and white, that, yeah, you can, you can require that. Law enforcement salaries are one that they talk about a lot, that, that's one thing they specifically say you can be reimbursed for, but you cannot be reimbursed for anything that was budgeted for. So you would really have to prove that their salaries were reallocated due to COVID, and that wasn't budgeted for that portion, so you could be reimbursed for it. When I talked to our auditor, I said, you know, when we were closed, we were all doing things different than what our normal job duties were, and there were a lot of COVID-related, can we claim those? He said, well, I don't think you can, because you were, your salaries are still budgeted, no matter what you were doing. Now, at the league webinar I was on said that, yes, if you are doing different duties and you're normal, it doesn't matter if that salary was budgeted for or not, you can claim those monies.
It seems like there's certainly cities that are taking the position that if people were doing different work, that those weren't, that that work wasn't budgeted for, even though they were budgeted to do something else, and I think some cities are being real aggressive on what they're doing with their police department, cause they're taking the position somehow, I don't really understand their rationale, but that law enforcement officers all of a sudden were doing a kind of a different sort of a job than what they had traditionally been doing, and so they're, they're trying to pay for a fair amount of law enforcement out of those COVID funds. It seems like that argument is being made, and some cities are being aggressive about it, now, they might get burned and have to pay some of the funds back, I don't know, but, but it seems like, I think a lot of cities are taking the position, you can be aggressive with these funds, cause you wanna use them, so let's do it.
Yeah, a couple of things that were brought up, we, we've talked here about, you know, could we, the keyless entry that we've talked about doing in the past, could we use the argument that that's allowing us not to touch doors and such, they believe that is a good, good thing that we could use it for added vehicles, so public works aren't sharing a vehicle would be potentially a good argument.
Right, but on the other hand, we should give back as much as we can to the businesses, cause the businesses are already paying for the city hall to be here.
Yep.
So if we take money away from them to help the city hall after we already took money away from them, and I don't understand one other thing, it doesn't, we don't get any more money if we don't run the program ourselves. If we run it ourselves, we still get the twenty-five percent, if they do it, we get the twenty-five percent, so there isn't any additional monies. Did I read that right?
But, but we don't get the twenty-five percent unless we use whatever we allocate.
Correct.
Great, but the odds of us, depending on what number you put, you should be able to allocate that, you should be able to use that number up.
It depends, you know, it depends on what's submitted for expenses, you know, not all the businesses are gonna have seventy-five hundred dollars of, of allowable expenses, I would imagine.
Especially if you. Seventy-five hundred dollars, and if you, and four or five months is even.
Do they have any guidelines on what can, what's considered a small business?
Less than fifty employees, I think, in their guy.
Yeah, depending on your, your insurance, the casualty liability insurance payments, mortgage rental payments, electric gas.
But it has to be something that wasn't budgeted for.
Huh?
I believe it has to be something that wasn't budgeted for.
No, I, I don't, I don't think that's right. The eligible expenses include all those things that they have listed on page sixty-two.
Right.
But it says that they must be necessary as a result of business interruption.
Mm-hmm. Right, so you, you have to have been closed or partially closed, or had to change your business model because of COVID. So the, I mean, the obvious ones are gonna be the businesses that spent a couple of months being closed. If they, if they got PPP money during the time they were closed, they're really not gonna qualify, if they didn't, they will, I think.
Yeah, depending on how you use your PPP money, a lot of people use it all for payroll and nothing for your mortgages and so forth, so then you can use every one of your mortgage payments on this one.
Well, I'm not an expert on those PPP loans, but I'd be amazed if that was true, but, I mean, as when you applied for it, your, the amount you got depended on how much you put in of all of those things, why wouldn't you apply for the maximum? That seems crazy, but maybe people did it that way.
That was only payroll or utilities, wasn't mortgage.
No, it was rent or mortgage payments.
Was it rent?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could use that. Um, the biggest thing, though, is that if you got a PPP loan, you can't over-guess how many employees you had, because then you only get so much of a forgiving if you lose them employees.
Right.
So a lot of companies went down.
Oh, on employees.
Right. For the mere fact that, then you're running this guessing game. But you could be right, I only know what I know. It'll be that simple, but I guess we gotta figure out who's gonna run it. A little bit of me says let Stearns County run it, because then we don't have to do a lot of the work and so forth, and they're gonna make the judgment calls on all the companies, I like that. The other thing I like is if the city runs it, we can change what we want and give it to more companies, and help out our businesses in town.
And I, I like Belinda's idea of sort of a middle ground of letting the county run it, and maybe giving them a nominal amount of money, but then developing our own program with what's left. Rephrase that. If we tell the county to run this, and we maybe give them fifteen or twenty thousand, they'll help out, they'll give more on their end to do this program, and we can do another program here in town that might look a little bit different, have different application requirements, and we can fund that with whatever money we have left.
But, are we, if they have a list here of what things are eligible, like, how would we make our program look any different than this?
I, I don't think you get way different on what's eligible, I, I, I think what you probably make a little different is the application, I think you could probably simplify that a little bit.
And then if somebody gets help under this, they couldn't apply for us.
Right, and I don't know if they'd allow, allow us to do both kind of simultaneously or not, but I don't know if they'd have anything to say for what we do with our money.
The one thing I think, I mean, and maybe I'm misreading the environment, but given the little response we got to the original EDA loans, I, I, you might be overestimating how many people are really gonna wanna do this, I, I'm not. I'm not sure, I don't know. May, maybe, you know, I, it could go either way, but I think sometimes we overestimate how many people are interested in these loans.
One's a loan, one's a grant.
I, I get that, yeah, yeah. But, yeah.
But you could be right, if it's a lot of people, they're not going to do it.
Yeah.
If they gotta disclose a lot of information depending who they is, they're not going to do it. So maybe we say twenty-five thousand or three thousand, give it to Stearns County, then can we run our own program and do the same thing, only different with another twenty-five thousand?
I don't know, that'd be a question for Stearns County. I mean, I, I got a feeling they're gonna hear about it, so I, I'd want to ask them. I think, I don't want to try to, I don't want to try to be sneaky about that.
That's what you were thinking, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should probably get the answer to that question before we.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think it would pay to try to sneak that one by, I'm, I do my opinion.
Um, when do they need a response on this, Melinda?
Well, they've already opened up the process.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, you know, September fourth is when their deadline is.
What is?
For applications.
For applications.
Oh.
So.
When, when was that?
We have three weeks from now.
Yeah.
Wow.
And you don't have a council meeting to announce that?
Mm-hmm. Well, well, I think, I still think the biggest thing is to get the information out there so businesses know that this is available. I don't know if the chamber or who could send a letter or.
So, but if we managed it ourselves, we wouldn't have to use that September fourth deadline, right? We could extend ours another month.
I would think so, it's our money. Yeah, I just, I don't think they can totally tell us what we can do with our Cares money.
So we could let them administer it and then after September fourth, we could open up our own program maybe for those that haven't, or didn't apply, maybe?
It'd probably take us till then to, we should have put together. You know?
Yeah.
I mean, by the time you develop your criteria, get your, develop, put some criteria down, throw an application together, get the council to look at it and approve it, it's gonna be September fourth. I mean, realistically.
Let's, let's let the county run this one and try to get the word out there somehow to.
When's the cutoff date?
September fourth.
September fourth is a cutoff for people to apply with the county.
Yeah.
It opened on the, what's today?
The third, I think.
I think.
Yep.
Either knowing that we won't get something in place before that application deadline, maybe we do just let them handle it.
That's, that's kind of the way I'm, I'm thinking here too and, you know, and understanding, you know, with the limitations of what counts as, as eligible costs. I, I have a hunch that we're be able to cover quite a few businesses if they would, would apply.
We're gonna lose the whole thing.
Yep, and then the question would be as to how much we wanted to designate because they want funds sent to them so they can.
They do.
Can start writing checks.
If we send them like twenty thousand and then based on how much we're using of that, we could put something together for.
At a later time.
Yeah.
I think so.
I would make the motion to let Stearns County administer the program and for the city to direct thirty thousand of its Cares money towards this program.
Second.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by, was that Hertzberg, me, was that you? Okay, to authorize Stearns County to administer the program and designate thirty thousand dollars of our Cares money to the program. Discussion?
Yes, if, if I'm understanding that right, if thirty thousand would give four businesses hope.
So as I understand.
Maybe five.
Five hundred to seventy-five hundred.
But, and as I look at this, I don't see a cap on the amount of money that comes to Painesville businesses if we send the county some of our money. It looks like there's only a cap if we do not send it.
Yeah.
So I think as long as we send them some money, Painesville businesses can apply for however much money goes into the entire pool. So whatever the county donates or whatever the county contributes plus all of the other cities, will be eligible for Painesville businesses. I only see a cap if they administer and we do not help out financially. So that, I said thirty because it was a reasonable number that helps out some businesses and if we don't get it back, we know that at least we put a good fourth effort. Um, we've still got enough left to help us out.
Yeah.
And that was just one thing I wanted to point out, just a reminder that whatever we give them, we don't know if they don't go through it, if we'll get it back. They don't know this.
Yeah, it says they don't have unlimited resources. If you wish for the county to administer the program, we ask that you send some of your financial allocations, county, to assist in the county's program.
Yeah, they will certainly pitch in as well.
Yep. It's basically our contribution and it opens up the door for businesses to apply for the funds.
And does the city need the other hundred and fifty thousand?
Well, we're chipping away at it. And we have to help, but middle of November?
Yes.
Well, I think the city should cough up more than thirty thousand.
Well, we may end up coughing up more. But this is a start, as far as I'm concerned. Any other question or discussion? Okay, motion is to authorize, or to have Stearns County administer the program and designate thirty thousand of our Cares funds for that. All in favor, I?
I.
I oppose.
Right.
One, motion carries.
Four to one. I would also motion city staff to look into developing an economic assistance program of our own, if possible.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Renkey, seconded by Gilmore to authorize the staff to look into developing its own business, what did you call that?
I'll call it a COVID relief plan.
A COVID relief plan?
Yeah.
Business COVID relief, or just COVID relief plan.
I guess my personal preference would be if we can help out individuals through a partnership with the chamber or something, but I don't know that we can.
I'm assuming, Sean, that's with the remainder of our funds that we have?
Yeah. If that. I don't know. My motion doesn't set a cap limit on the funds because I don't know what we're gonna need for reasonable city things, but I'm envisioning something, a good chunk of money. Like, at least fifty plus, I'm, I have in my head, but I don't know.
Yep.
Any other question or discussions?
How do we plan on letting businesses know what's available?
We work with the chamber, we've got the city's social media, we've got, you know, word will start getting out if we. Start.
Because the Painesville press doesn't get well, well read. Can we send an email to the chamber?
Yep.
And they can kick it out?
I can get ahold of Adam.
Mm-hmm. Because that covers a lot, a lot of businesses.
And, and it is tough to do direct because, you know, it's hard to, you know, you're gonna miss somebody and they'll be upset.
If we, if we can do our own plan and the county plan, they should be aware of both, both options.
Yep.
Yep, and I will check tomorrow to see about doing the unilateral plan.
Yep, they have that chamber connection that they put out on a regular basis that would be a good one. Anything else? All in favor, I?
I.
All right.
Oppose?
None, that carried. Did somebody see?
Oh, yeah, I just was thinking that Community Ed does that talk of Painesville, maybe they could.
Oh, yeah.
Down there.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
No, all this is just for in Painesville businesses, not township?
No, it's for the county, right?
Well, if we do something in-house, that would be for the city.
Yep.
The county is doing it for all the county and our money's going toward that pool.
So the township probably has to throw some money in there if they want.
I don't know.
All that works.
Yeah.
So there, there's some kind of wording in here about the city signing a subrecipient agreement with the county? Um, do we need to authorize somebody to sign that paperwork when it's completed?
No.
Um, then I would make the motion to authorize, um, city administrator and the mayor, I guess if that's required, to sign the subrecipient agreement with the county.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Renkey to authorize the proper individuals, administrator or mayor or both, was required to, um, complete the agreement application. Discussion? All in favor, I?
I.
I oppose. None, that carried. All right, then we're all down to police department, body worn cameras, page sixty-four, and nothing new on that?
I don't think so.
Nothing's happened in the last thirty minutes or so?
No.
All right. Uh, surplus property, you couldn't sell both of them, huh?
I'm not sure.
But we have a kind of an offer on one?
We do have an offer on, uh, on the two thousand eleven Crown Victoria. We had one offer on the cars. Uh, that offer came in from Lee Schlepper for five hundred and eighty-six dollars. Um, I did have a conversation, um, with our installer that we go through for our squads. They had expressed some interest before on it. Um, data indicated they might be interested in the vehicle still and doing a swap for some services with the upcoming installs of the squad cars. But.
For those kind of prices, you could almost go to one of the junkyards and see if they give you a package deal and take them for fifteen hundred or whatever. Because scrap metal's pretty low, but you're still looking at a hundred bucks a car. And these ones you didn't throw on eBay or nothing like that, you just set them out in the street or down here, I meant?
We set them out here, posted it two weeks straight in the paper. Had it on our city website, city Facebook page.
Do you have a blue book value on those vehicles?
Your, your best is probably, uh, the local marketplace. That gets looked at a lot.
The blue book on them is, uh, and this is just going off the top of my head from, uh, from the last action sheet. Anywhere between, you know, two to three to four or five. Um, I can tell you that those cars will never get that. When we were selling them on eBay, I think the highest bid I got was maybe nine hundred dollars.
So we didn't turn on, um, Facebook Marketplace or anything like that?
Didn't put them on Marketplace, no. Well, I shouldn't say that, I'm assuming we didn't, I mean, I didn't direct Kristen to do it, but.
Oh, gotcha. I, I didn't see them on Marketplace myself.
Yeah, I just had Kristen put them on our Facebook page, um, so.
It's kind of lower than what you thought.
What do we cost us to advertise that in the paper? A few hundred bucks?
We might have covered it.
I move to approve the bid from Lee Schlepper for the two thousand eleven Ford Crown Victoria in the amount of five hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Second.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by LeBeau to approve the bid from Lee Schlepper for the two thousand eleven Ford Crown Vic in the amount of five hundred and eighty-six dollars. Discussion?
Just that we could re-list it, but it's not going to cover our costs and time, let's just be done.
Spend more time moving around so we can mold and, uh. Anything else? All in favor, I?
I.
I oppose. None, motion carries. Um, in regards to the two thousand nine, um, can we just basically call that scrap and take an offer on something like that in exchange for?
Can we tell Lee that he bought both of them?
Well, we do, we do have, uh.
Buy one, get one free.
Yeah. Lee?
I'll go Monday.
We have a policy or our city ordinance on excess policy, on excess property ties our hands a little bit. I think we have something in there about being able to donate them things to a nonprofit or something, I'd have to look at it. I mean, I don't know if we want to, if there's a nonprofit that would take it and try to sell it for us, I'm not sure, that might.
Well, what would happen if the keys were left in it and it was gone? Would we file a missing?
Insurance claim.
Yeah, yeah, you'd have an insurance claim about a half hour later, I'm sure.
Um, so it says here that the installer has some interest? Have you talked with them at all about like what that exchange would look like?
About four hundred and fifty bucks worth of work.
And in a case like that, you know, if they're gonna use it for a derby car or something, do they, would there be title transfer or do they?
I mean, from our perspective, we'd want to transfer title.
Yeah.
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 But who would pay that, you know, typically the.
That would be their responsibility.
I.
It would be their responsibility to pay it.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think something like that to keep it clean. You'd want an invoice where he charged you for the services, then he pays you on an invoice the money back. So there's a paperwork.
A bill of sale?
On both sides.
I, well, I, you know, I guess the question is legally, what can we do?
Yeah, I mean, that's the problem is we, we need to look at our city ordinance on disposal of excess property and see what we can do. I, I think we're kind of tied to this bidding process.
Mm-hmm.
Unless, unless you decide to give it to a charity, is my recollection, I'd.
So Bill, I've pulled it and I don't see the charitable thing in here. I know the league says we can do it, I just don't think we've adopted the policy.
Okay.
Um, but it says we can either direct negotiate with potential buyers or by sealed bids because it's twenty-five thousand or less.
Okay.
Um, we can also sell to another government agency for, without competitive bidding. So the thought I had is maybe if the school's land trans program would be interested, sell it to them for a buck.
Or. Could do that or the direct negotiation if that works with this company.
I would do that as well.
They'll give you four or five hundred bucks, it's probably worth doing it.
Yep.
Or could the city just give it to the school for the land trans?
Oh, that's what Sean just said, you got another government entity, you could, yeah.
Yeah.
You could take a baseball bat to it and use it for bodywork?
They can tear apart the mortar and put it back together again.
Mm-hmm.
They could figure out how to fix the transmission, right?
What's that?
They could fix the transmission.
No, that one works.
Mm-hmm.
They can learn a lot off them.
Yeah.
The old nine is the blue one, the white one had the.
No, it's the old canine one.
Yeah, I, I believe the issue with the transmission was not what it was reported to be. I believe the oil that was out of a release valve is what was burning.
Well, the, you know, if, if the installer is willing to exchange some for services, if we could somehow get that worded properly as a negotiated sale, I, I'd be for that.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense, you know, you just negotiate to sell it to them for four hundred, four hundred and fifty bucks or whatever and then he, instead of giving you cash, he'd give you credit on a bill.
Credit on account, yep.
And I think that works.
Yeah, credit on account, as long as you got a paperwork trail is what I, what I'd like to see.
And is it my understanding, the only stipulation is that they will need to transfer title?
Hmm. So I guess we'll be looking for a motion to authorize the chief to negotiate a sale of the two thousand nine Ford Crown Victoria to the city squad installer.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion by Renkey, seconded by a bunch of here, I think Alicia jumped in there first. Motion by Renkey, seconded by Alicia to authorize the chief to negotiate a deal with the installer for the two thousand nine Crown Victoria. Discussion? All in favor, I?
I.
Oppose? None, that carried. Thank you. We are down. We are down to informational. The only thing on there is the note from MediaCom that they're not going to be offering NFL channels and there might not be anything to offer on the NFL channels.
Just wobble oil. Nice.
And then the notice that the Rachel Thomas is leaving the GRL and headed, what, north, I believe?
To Duluth.
To Duluth. And then the notice of the public hearing for Stearns County in regards to something happening out there just west of town with the cash in regards to a solar farm. That's it. Thank you all, we're adjourned.